Well, it's been a good time because I did get some money. I helped them out and you know, everything you go talk to them anymore about. I was buying them. And remember, you.
Yeah.
That's talk.
That clock is.
Oh, okay.
For the longest time it was slow and now.
I don't know, you can't push them. What do you want me to say? We're just slower facts.
Yeah.
So I guess we're never on time. We're here on the short end of the law.
We try.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Preston County Commission. Today is March first, two thousand twenty-two, and it's nine thirty. And we will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all three commissioners are present, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Price, Commissioner Smith. And we will begin with the recognition of the public. Is there anybody to be recognized?
Uh, do we need, you don't want to speak, right, Anne? Nathan, you don't want to speak with Abby because he goes here. That's why we need to end that.
Okay. Can I get a review of the bills?
We are reviewing the bills as I speak. And when we approve all those, we're paid them. That's my motive.
So properly moved and seconded to review and pay the bills. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, brings us to our assessor's office with Connie. Connie, oh, boy. Connie. It is March first today. My son's birthday.
Oh, my son's too.
Oh, well, very good.
Well, just wait and go ahead and have a party.
Okay.
And like a lineman or something like that. Uh, these are just, um, three corrections for this name. Uh, actually, it's a mobile home. Was left on personal property and should have been put on real estate. Okay. And we did a supplemental for the person who owned the mobile home. They put it on the real estate. So the supplemental's over. Um, we take care of that. Okay. It is in the amount of fifty-six oh six, fifty-five thirty-six, and fifty-five sixty-six for a total of one sixty-seven oh eight.
And we approved the adjusted.
Uh, second one?
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the tax correction list as it was presented to us by the assessor Connie. Commissioner Price? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Moves us along to our nine thirty-one appointment with VJ Davis from the Preston County Health Department with an update, Laura Jones, Mylan Pushcar Health Right Letter Support Harm Reduction Program.
Morning.
And if you were wondering, my birthday is March nineteenth.
That was my mother's.
Oh, this is a birthday. Nobody else mentioned any other dates?
Yes, or not expected, but they are. Um, well, we're here to, for harm reduction as well as COVID. I think we can do COVID us an hour after. Like I was getting new answers. It can be pretty brief. As far as that day, I haven't updated in a while. We are seeing a huge decrease in cases. You know, for the last couple of months, we had had a huge increase in cases with Omicron. We are seeing a huge drop off in cases. Our status last few days has been yellow. In the last seven days, we have had ninety-three new cases, zero deaths. So, you know, we are definitely seeing it. It is going to be something we continue to see for a while. Uh, the hope is that, you know, we don't see another increase. But if one thing we've learned with COVID is it is very unpredictable. But, you know, there has, the governor has, has already started talking about moving this from a pandemic to endemic. That decision hasn't been made yet, but, you know, I, 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 I probably assume that it probably will be made here probably once they see that the numbers are starting to stay, starting to stay down. Um, you know, from the health department's side, you know, we are still offering vaccine clinics on Tuesdays and Thursdays by appointment. Uh, we are still going out and doing, um, toll bound shots for anybody that calls and requests one. We can offer transportation for someone that wants a COVID shot. So basically, anybody that wants one can get one at this point in time. Uh, they just need to give us a call. And, um, the thing that I wanted to, to also bring up is, you know, the one thing that in, so this has started, we're two years into it. And, you know, we have had a hundred and twenty-five Preston counties die from COVID. That's something you don't want to ever see a number like that. And, um, to, to give you a little bit of perspective on that, uh, you know, over the course of the last five years, flu, we averaged about fifteen deaths a year. So, you know, this definitely has taken a toll in Preston County, not only with numbers, deaths, but so we still want to caution people be, to be careful, to know it's still out there. It's not going to disappear. It's still going to be out there. And it can really make people that are vulnerable really, really sick. Uh, we've heard stories of people that have had COVID that have said that it is the worst illness they've ever had in their entire life. Some people don't get that sick at all. So that part hasn't changed from day one until now. Um, but, you know, we are starting, like I said, probably be moving from pandemic to endemic when the governor makes that decision. Um, and what that would mean is just, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be probably, it would be more fluid like at that point in time. So, um, you got any questions regarding COVID? Okay. Everybody's questioned now when it comes to COVID. So, okay, the other purpose we're here for today is, um, as you know, in the past, the, the health department in conjunction with Mylan Pushcar Health Right, um, has offered harm reduction program in the county. When COVID hit, it kind of slowed down. We did continue to offer the program. However, last year, legislature adopted new legislation um, to govern harm reduction programs. In the past, the harm reduction program had to be approved by the local health department. So we had enlisted Mylan Pushcar Health Right and partnered with them for them to do that program in Preston County, which they were doing all the way up until December of this past year. Uh, that's when the new legislation kicked in. And the new legislation takes the health department approval out of the scenario. Uh, we are still very supportive of Mylan Pushcar Health Right offering this program. And we do see a huge need for it in Preston County. That's why I'm here today is to say, from the health department's standpoint, we do still support this program and will help any, any way we can with it. But the approval process now has to lie with county commission, has to approve the program to operate in the county. And any, if you're operating within the city limits of a city, that city's government has to approve the program. So that's why Laura's here today to give you guys a presentation and to, and to seek that possible approval from you guys. So this is Laura Jones, who is the executive director of Mylan Pushcar Health Right.
Good morning.
Good morning. Take my mask off. That's my picture. Um, my name is Laura Jones. I have been with Mylan Pushcar Health Right for twenty-two years and the executive director for seventeen of those years. And, um, never in my career, which actually started here in Preston County, um, have I experienced a level of concern over drowsiness in our communities than I have in the last five, seven years. We've been operating a harm reduction program in Mon County for the last seven years. And, um, after we saw reports in the newspaper about syringes in flowerpots in Kingwood, we decided to, um, talk with the health department and see if we could partner and do something about it. Uh, seeing even one syringe in a flowerpot will tell you that there's probably a bigger problem than you realize that you have. And one of the benefits of harm reduction is that we offer a mechanism for people to return their syringes. We also offer, because we are able to get people in, um, we have the opportunity to work with them on a whole number of issues. So we, we work with them in finding healthcare. We work with them in finding treatment if they're interested. We work with them to, um, to screen for HIV and Hep C, which are huge concerns in our community as well. Uh, and those are required questions every time someone comes to the program. So we, every time someone comes in, we ask them, are you interested in treatment today? Can we help you find a physician? Do you have a need that our nurse can help with? So we're looking at whole person care. We are not just settling syringes. The idea behind getting people into the program is that people who come to a harm reduction program are three to five times more likely to get into treatment. So that's another thing that we work on when, when folks are at the program. Um, West Virginia currently is number one in the country in Hep C, uh, rates of Hep C. Two hundred and one cases of Hep C for every one hundred thousand people in our state, which is a lot. Um, there are currently between a hundred and twelve and a hundred and thirty-nine people in Preston County living with HIV. And if any of those folks are also using drugs and sharing syringes, then we are at risk of outbreak in this community as well. The state has ranked, uh, epidemiologists at the state have ranked all of the counties from one being the worst and fifty-five being the best in terms of the possibility of an HIV or Hep C outbreak. And Preston County is number fourteen. Mon County is number thirty-eight, if I'm correct. So that's a concern. Uh, and there isn't a lot of testing going on in, in and around Preston County. We have started an outreach program that is able to go out and do not only COVID testing and COVID vaccine, but also Hep C and HIV testing because we want to identify folks early and get them into treatment so that we can prevent that from happening. That's the ultimate goal of harm reduction. It's a public health intervention. It's been in the United States for more than thirty years, but it's been around the world for many years. The World Health Organization and the CDC both support harm reduction services and have and do provide technical assistance and information regarding how best to run a harm reduction program. Um, it was actually under the Trump administration. Uh, Trump had a goal of ending HIV in the United States within a ten-year period of time. And he and his administration committed funding to harm reduction programs for that purpose. So, um, that's how we got started in two thousand fifteen. There was some, um, funding available. And, um, so this program in this county is at no cost to the county or the city or the health department. Um, we make sure that we find grant money to cover it so that you are not saddled with any of the costs. Our program started out with, um, about seventy-five hundred dollars initially because we thought we would only serve thirty-five to seventy-five people in the first year. Uh, we served three hundred people in the first year in Mon, in Mon County. And we now have served over eighteen hundred unduplicated individuals um, in north central West Virginia, including folks in Preston County. So there are a lot of people that are in need of this kind of service. Um, it's controversial. There's no doubt about that. It doesn't make sense to some people because why would you give syringes to someone who is actively using drugs? But the reality is that if they don't have a clean syringe, they will use any syringe they find. And, um, so the best way to stop, there are other illnesses that people get from not just HIV and Hep C, but endocarditis and MRSA and a lot of other abscesses and, and internal infections that can derail people and put them in the hospital for a very long time. And, uh, WDU can tell you how many endocarditis patients they have. It's overwhelming. Uh, they have a whole unit now of people who need valve replacements because of infections they have gotten from sharing syringes. So it's a serious issue. Um, it is not considered enabling, although people, a lot of people think that um, because the reality is that if people are addicted to heroin, they're going to use it one way or the other, even if they can't find a clean syringe. So, um, our goal is to make sure that they have a clean syringe every single time. The new licensure process, uh, has changed the way we operate a little bit. Um, we are now operating as an exchange. So in the past, we were a needs-based program. Um, if someone needed a hundred syringes, they got a hundred syringes. And it, they didn't necessarily have to bring exactly that many back. Um, we will now be giving back to people only what they bring back. So, um, that it, it will be an actual exchange process. Um, we are now also required to have some form of West Virginia identification. Doesn't have to be a, um, a picture ID from the DMV. It can be a bill with your name and address on it. It can be anything that indicates that you live in West Virginia. And we're no longer able to provide secondary exchange. So in the past, one way to get syringes out to people who are either too afraid to come in or have no transportation is to give syringes to people who then give them to their friends or family. Um, unfortunately, in West Virginia, we have a lot of families, multi-generational opioid use. So, um, one person coming to pick up for a family was the way we basically provided care during COVID because we didn't want all of them to be exposed to our clinic and vice versa. But we will no longer be able to do that. So people will have to show up in person with an ID in order to receive syringes. Um, these measures sound like they are positive changes, but they don't, um, meet best practice in terms of being able to prevent HIV and Hep C on any scale that we would like to do, like to happen. Um, but we feel like it is the best way to make contact with people, build rapport with people, eventually get them into treatment and provide all kinds of other services. We fill out Medicaid applications. Um, we get people into medical care. We, um, fill out HUD papers with people. We get them SNAP benefits. Our goal is to stabilize their lives so that they can think about going to treatment. Um, it's a lot of work. Our program now costs almost three hundred thousand dollars um, because of the cost of the supplies we provide. Uh, we do a lot of education. We provide education on Hep C, HIV, birth control. Um, we would love to be able to decrease the number of neonatal abstinence children in West Virginia. And by being able to see folks and help them with their needs, we can often, um, work on those issues as well. So that's kind of where we are. Um, we, we've had a very small program in Preston County. It's been largely by, um, uh, word of mouth. And, uh, there are a lot of people that are afraid to come to the program because they're afraid they will be arrested. Uh, one of the new parts of the law creates an immunity for people who are driving used syringes in their vehicles. So if they get pulled over and they have used syringes in a container, they cannot be arrested for having the used syringes. And that is to encourage people to bring those syringes back so they can be properly disposed. We disposed of two hundred and forty pounds of syringes last month. Every single month, we, we dispose of a huge, I don't know, VJ can confirm, but I'm sure the hospital can confirm that two hundred and forty pounds of syringes is a lot of syringes. And so we feel like we are getting a, a pretty good number back. And we have some of those statistics available as well. So I'm ready for your questions.
I'd like, thank Commissioner Smith because he sent us a pros and cons article. That was.
Wonderful.
That was interesting. And sent me to the meeting today without knowing one thing. Plus, it, you know, your presentation to me was great. Uh, I don't think that anybody thinks that this is a hundred percent good.
No. And even I would agree that there are risks on all sides.
And, and so with that in mind, the same thing when we first had this presentation, uh, a couple of years, three, four years ago, whatever. It's like, wow, I cannot believe that we're going to approve something like this. Uh, but this is one of those, there are a couple of things that I'm concerned about is the, the availability of treatment. And I understand that that is a problem.
It is. It continues to be a problem, particularly in Preston County. Um, most of the folks that we, I, I did check and we have referred people to treatment, uh, from Preston County. And most of those folks have ended up in medication assisted treatment programs as opposed to inpatient care. Because inpatient care means going far away from your community sometimes. Sometimes the only bed available might be in Huntington. And nobody wants to go that far from family and friends. So they end up more in outpatient care. Um, Health Right has started a medication assisted treatment program. So we are able to absorb some of the folks that are, um, needing care. And we probably will be, well, we are now expanding the number of people that are, that are in that program. We're trying to hit this on every side we can. Medically, harm reduction wise, and behavioral health wise. So we have all of that in place and it's available to anyone.
Those things make me say, I'm okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's all.
And then you get complaints about syringes in the community and then it feels not so okay. And I totally get that. One of the things that the new law requires is that we have to work with whatever community agrees to develop a syringe cleanup plan. And, um, we have a fairly robust one in Morgantown, but we have a lot of folks who are willing to volunteer and go out and, and help us. Um, it's a little bit harder because we're not located in your community. And we had already talked with the health department about this in August twenty nineteen and, or October, I can't remember. Um, but then COVID hit in, in twenty twenty. And so, um, it, we got derailed at that point because we ended up focusing on COVID care and treatment and.
Where do you, where do you set up this term in Morgantown?
Um, it's, it's at our clinic. Yeah, it's right in our clinic, right downtown.
Yeah, it's one of the big problems and VJ knows here in Preston County. It's set up here.
Yeah, it's, it's set up at Valley Healthcare.
Okay, where is that?
In, uh, uh, Garden Estates on. Garden Tower.
It's one of your towns, yeah. I know Bridget.
Yeah, originally they, they were going down here, but then winter hit.
Yeah.
Yeah. We also had a run-in with the farmer's market, which was kind of.
Yeah, I don't know what's said about that, but, uh.
It went well, actually, but yeah.
I, uh, that, that's the only adjustment that would be nice is maybe it, I don't know how you could promote it even more that you're here and that you're doing this besides the great people from the press over here will mention it, but then it'll go away and you're still coming, you know? And there, and there's not a method that I know of to, maybe to get the word out every time when you come. Uh, and I'd sure love to see maybe two or three places in Preston County that you would be able to come to with promotion of the fact that you'd be here.
We have thought about that a great deal. We think there are some places, um, in various parts of Preston County that need this very much. Um, if they are unincorporated areas, then we could do that just with county approval. If they are like the city of Gerald A. or, um, Rollsburg, then we would have to have that community agree. And we would be interested in suggestions from you about where you think some hotspots are that we could. Either we could set up a mobile program in Preston County so that we don't have a fixed site and we just drive our van around to various locations.
Sounds like something would work better here than, than.
Morgantown.
Morgantown because you could be in a good proximity to eighty percent of the people or ninety in Morgantown, you know?
Right.
And, uh, up here, it's a different story. It's a challenge.
The other important thing to know is that we are under OFLAC, the Office of Health Facilities Licenseur. And with this licensure process, so, um, we are required to report lots of information to them. Um, we are, we are subject to visits from them. And if there are serious complaints that are, um, they would investigate those complaints. So that's another level of oversight that we really didn't have prior to. We were certified through the state primary care office. But, um, now we have OFLAC and we will have to fill out a full application in order to be here in, in, uh, Preston County.
The hope on is outside the city limits. You can't get inside as far as you turn out. I just thought, you know, but that's even harder to get to than being located someplace in that town. And I know there's a need.
Yeah.
So, uh, but, but there probably is in other communities too. I'd like to see some of that, but I, I don't think.
That's okay. Don?
Well, the only question I have is, you, you say this is a one-to-one exchange program. That's one of the things that I worry about because I have personally had experience where I'm picking up assurances when I'm picking up trash on the road or picking up on the trail sites and stuff. In fact, we have certain forage groups and things like that that will no longer do that sort of thing because they are so afraid of that. What assurances can we get that it is a true one-to-one exchange? Because if I give you twenty-five, but you only give me twenty back, where are those other five going? You know what I mean?
Well, what we believe is that people are going to be much more willing to not dispose of their syringes incorrectly because they are going to be required to bring them back. Uh, and we are seeing that in Morgantown. So we typically have a hundred and fifty pounds of, um, syringes in Morgantown and in an average month, and sometimes it's a hundred and eighty. And in the first month of operation in January, we had two hundred and forty pounds of syringes returned. So we believe that, and we've, we have been telling people for at least the last six months that this is coming, um, that they're going to have to do this. And there are reasons for that. Now, will that mean there will never be a syringe in the community? Absolutely not. Not everyone comes to our exchange. So we are not always able to, um, impress upon people how important it is. The other thing you have to remember is that we also have people who literally are afraid to bring their syringes in, even with the new law. You know, there's drug residue in there. People feel like this is something that could get them in trouble. If they already have a warrant, they're definitely not going to do that. And so, um, we, we teach them the appropriate way to dispose of them at home. And there is an illegal way through the West Virginia DHHR that explains how to, it would be just like insulin syringes. It's the same way people dispose of insulin syringes at home. Put them in a bottle, put some bleach in the bottom, twist the lid, put tape over the lid and write sharps on the outside of the container. And you can throw it in your regular garbage. Um, what we don't want them to do is just be throwing them in the garbage because then we put our garbage collector's napkins. The other option is for us to put up. The other option is for us to put up syringe return boxes in strategic locations like Brown's Barfee, and other places where syringes aren't found regularly. And we can certainly do that. We're doing that in Morgantown, we're putting up two along the rail trail. And both Huntington and Charleston have huge mailbox-sized returns. We're putting up smaller ones that are tamper-proof, that are used in the jail system. So once you put that syringe in there, there's no way to get it out.
Could that be part of your plan?
Yes, absolutely. If that's what you would like your plan to be, we absolutely could do that. So we would have to, if we're going to do it in Kingwood, we'd have to have permission from the city to do that. But we could certainly put some outside the city limits or in other places that we think there's a problem.
Well, I'd like to work, I'd like to work on seeing this be available if we're going to do it in a few other places in the county. And including that depository there.
Sure.
Well, again, thanks, Dawn, for the article, giving us a little insight on what you were coming to speak about today. It's definitely a, a huge issue, one in which internally I'm very torn as well. It's one that, you know, it's easy to say, you know, just arrest people just to do this, just do that, but in the end game, that doesn't truly solve the issue when they get to come back out. Seeing, being involved in a lot of youth organizations, you, you get to see the direct product of these, these kids that are coming from homes where this is happening. And you often, often wonder, you know, are they exposed to something because the parents or whoever they're with is using a dirty needle or something like that? So it's a, it's a trickling down effect. So my one question is, is just to kind of put this into perspective, when you say 240 pounds of syringes, what would you say would be the, because in my mind, if someone is committing to wanting to use a clean needle, if they're committing to that, they're thinking in a more forward direction of, I need to get off of this, I need to stop.
Yes. It's one step towards
Yes, because the people that have no commitment and are using a dirty needle and don't care...
They're not going to come to our
They're not coming anyway.
Correct.
And so I feel like you're doing a little bit of justice, or a lot, you know? Like I said, this is a very torn and controversial subject. So I feel like those people that are wanting the help are the people that are seeking the clean needle, and that's also a cry for help or additional service that's such an offer. And knowing what I see in a day-to-day, you know, on a day-to-day basis, my mind doesn't, I'm not concerned with them, I'm not concerned with helping them, I'm concerned with helping what's at home and the people that are counting on them and all those other things.
Right.
And so trying to stop it, you know? And if that is an avenue to help break the chain, so to speak, then I, I tend to feel the need versus the other part of my brain saying, oh, you know, you know?
And every, I think we're all frustrated because it's been so long, and it's not getting better. Doesn't feel like it's getting better, but it, it is getting better, and slowly. And the other thing is that we, so the one definition of recovery is any small change. So when you walk into a harm reduction program, that's the first small change, because you are trusting enough to come in and ask for help, or get more information, or, you know, talk to somebody about treatment. And it's a long, you know, the first time somebody comes in, they're anxious, they're nervous, they want to get in and out. But the second or third time they come in, they stay long enough to get HIV and Hep C testing. They maybe say, you know, I have this sore on my arm, it's not going away, you know? And that gives us the opportunity to make real change. So you're absolutely right. The people that come to the harm reduction program are people who don't want to die, want to stay healthy, and hopefully are beginning to see a life without drugs. Yeah.
So you don't have to vote on this one. I'm here, you're free to.
I've asked the questions, and is this an annual renewal?
It is an annual renewal, and if you're totally unhappy with how it's going, you can revoke it.
I, I hate to start something with the idea that I'm going to revoke it.
Right. Well, you know, maybe two years from now, and you think it's not working.
And to give you, basically, the way this new process works is, in order to do it in the county, the county commission has to, has to write a letter of support for the program. Then if it's going to operate within the city limits of an incorporated town, that town council has to also give the approval for it.
Do we feel like we have a meeting with the towns and the cities?
So with you guys approving it, the program could operate, you know, in the county as long as it wasn't inside the town. I wanted you guys to understand.
You know, as, as long as another town could, could, could come on board at some point.
Yes.
And, and at any point, that, that's okay. So in my mind, we could get it started, let them proceed, send them a letter, and, and hope that we could maybe speak with a couple of town councils and see who would be interested in that and figure out. So my motion would be
In front of Kingwood City Council. We haven't received an answer from them.
Right.
Just, just one question. Would it be better if, I mean, do you have any locations in mind outside of corporation? I think what Commissioner Stone is alluding to, would it be better to have something so you can develop sites? Right now, if there would be no municipalities that would be willing to participate, then your, your one location is out because it's within the city of Kingwood.
Right.
So there would have to be locations developed.
Well, and, and what I would love to do, because I, I feel unprepared to vote on this, however, I feel like this is a lot to digest. This is, you know, this is off of our basic trail every day of what we're dealing with and what we're working on.
Correct.
And although, you know, I don't know, what's your thoughts? Are you prepared today to do more?
Yeah, because I'm not going to change my mind in a week or two. I, I just, I do see a purpose in
I do too.
And maybe waiting in one way, because maybe there could be some contacts made with, with some of the communities, and give us time to, maybe they would read this, and maybe we would encourage some of them to come on board. And like I say, I know in, in the situation with the eastern part of the county, that there's a need there for that, as far as it's an overspill from Maryland, and, and there's a lot of activity going on because of the location everywhere, but
In Montague County, did the commission vote, and then Morgantown embrace?
Yes, we went to the county commission first, and then we went to the city council, we did it backwards here. But we had unanimous support from both, because they, probably because they're more familiar with our program, since we're right down the road from City Hall.
So if you feel more comfortable in trying to contact, I just don't know.
No, I just, I really like the idea of the drop spots around the county in various locations, also with, you know? And I think that, you know, in our county, because we're unique and how we're laid out and, you know, different things like that.
Yeah, or Pennsylvania, America.
Right. I, I really feel it's going to be a lot more work on your end, so certainly appreciate that, because it's going to take, to get the word out and to get people to utilize the program. The need is great. And so
That's it, yeah, whatever you guys feel like.
Okay.
I'm, I'm ready to, I'm here, I'm coming.
I would entertain a question if someone wishes so to do one.
Then I move with the consideration that they're going to try to spread this across the county. I move that we send a letter of approval and support for, for this program in Preston County, and try to get a hold of some of the communities. I'll add that to that motion.
I'll see. It's been properly moved and seconded to do a letter of support for the harm reduction program with all of Commissioner Price's requests as stated in his original motion. And I'll take that to a vote. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Yes.
I would be happy to draft something in terms of a support letter and send it your way, and then you can add or delete whatever.
Thank you. If you'll contact our office, we'll get that taken care of.
Yes.
So we don't have to start from scratch.
I'll work on it.
And thank you very
And please, I would, I would like some updates to the commission.
Sure.
You know, initially, I would like maybe even quarterly updates, because again, if this isn't something that is a positive, that's helping to turn around some lives and, and helping, then I'm certainly not an advocate of just giving people clean needles. So I want to see statistics and things like that, because I, I do find great comfort in the fact that we can revoke this as quick as we approved it.
Right.
Yep.
That's always good.
And let me say my note, but it's nothing against you guys at all.
Oh, I
I read a great deal. I spent most of Saturday in regions now.
And I appreciate that.
I mean, I went through enormous amount of pros and cons and read some very, I mean, some abstract stuff from doctors and treatment specialists and stuff like that. So it wasn't like I'm just sitting there going, I'm digging my heels in and being stubborn about something.
No, I, I get it.
So, but after weighing out the two things, that was
There's about as many negatives in a, in a, in a certain sense
And that's the thing, I can look at
As many positives, but
Exactly. I, I see the positives, I also see the negatives.
The only thing that tips me is the fact of what's at home and what I see every day on a daily basis. If we can shed a little bit of additional light at the end of the dark tunnels that many of them face every single day, then the effort will be worth it, and your statistics will either prove us correct or we'll, we'll change that. So thank you so much for your time.
In fact, if BJ's support helps.
And I think the Health Department, that could be our one assistive agency between the programs.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you can bring that information to us.
I'd really love for this to work and steer people into treatment so we can get rid of this problem.
Yeah, and there needs to be more treatment available without traveling 200 miles.
Correct.
Hey, maybe that's something the state can do with Hopemont, make a treatment facility.
You know, it's big enough, they could use part of it.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right. Um, Linda, can we put off your appointment and move on and come back to you?
We need to
Please. All right, thank you.
Just so we can do that, because yours is easy.
All right, we're going to go ahead with our bid opening, PSD number four for the FEMA generator project. Sorry, we are running behind. It just was something of great need I really felt that we needed to listen to, so thank you for your patience.
We have, are you ready for bid opening?
Yes.
This is Cory, was here from, I always pronounce it wrong. Uh, we did receive one bid. If you open that, and then Cory is going to do all the review of the bid.
All right. Is that correct, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay. Michael Inc. of Bridgeport is who this bid is from for the PSD45 generator project.
Maybe it's not Michael, it's my kid.
It might be my kid. We're just going to say Michael. All right. Yes, the bid is submitted on time.
Yeah, we, we can, we can go over the checklist there.
All right.
I think Cory needs to go over the checklist. If you could just, since we only have one bid, we just need to get to the amount.
Cut to the chase.
Yeah.
How much does it cost?
I think that one
We actually have to check and make sure he submitted everything.
Well, yeah, that's true.
Before we open the second one.
Well, yeah, I know.
Oh, okay.
Yours too, different.
Yeah. And then you can actually open that. Yes. Everybody can talk if they want to. The silence is
I think that is what you need to be done.
Anyone want to bust out your music?
Yeah.
PSD45, make sure everything's signed. That's 215, that's
Another one. I got you. Just leave it in there a moment, that's why. Or he's going to touch it.
Yeah, you said you'd like to work with these things.
She's sounding, you know, because
That's not for Michael.
No, this lady.
Corporate secretary.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm going to play Google. All right, this is on qualifications for projects.
No, I told us what it is.
Financial reports.
Yep. Well, I'm sure that they could be lower if they didn't have
Okay, shake your hands.
Yeah, that's good.
That should be a bit formal. Base business, well, see.
Now, what do you want to do, if you want to take the originals and, you know, call these all stuff?
Um, yeah.
All right. Bid form and construction contract.
Two, three pages.
Yeah. Total bid price, that's
I think that was it, yeah.
I think so too, just going to put something out there.
Seems typical to just have one on a project, because this is kind of different than this.
Not really, not typical.
We're hoping for more.
Yeah.
All right, the total bid price, total of all of some bids is $466,300. Four, six, six, three, zero, zero, point, zero, zero.
We have to go to work, are we correct?
Well, I think the next step is to, I've already requested grant extension, or you'll have to.
Okay. Because we
Time extension as well.
That's over the price allocated for the project, so we'll have to have more
How much was it? I can't remember.
It was 300 and
320?
Something like that.
Okay, it's been so long since we talked about it, I forgot.
Yeah. So what we'll do is we'll take this, Cory and I'll need, we'll talk to, you know, this is a FEMA grant, so we'll have some discussion to do, and, and we will need grant extension based on this, so
Were there places to cut built into this?
Yes.
There are five, five sites, five different generator sites at different pump stations, so, and the
All right, okay, we got some money, and I'll email you, call you later about that.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Linda, we are ready for you.
All right, see you, Cory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have some relaxation business. I mean, we need to wrap up here. Just some procedures that have to be done. So every two years, we have to establish our emergency absentee voting policy, and that is whenever someone, eight days, six days before an election, someone gets sick at the last minute, gets taken to the hospital, we establish this policy so that two ballot commissioners, two emergency ballot commissioners can take a ballot to a healthcare facility within thirty miles of Kingwood. So, and we've been doing this several years. We've been to Morgantown Hospital, we've been to Preston Memorial. So it's, they don't know about it, and they use it.
Okay. You have some documents here that you've given us that you approved and signatures.
Yes, so just the first, the emergency absentee voting policy is the one that I need.
Okay.
Okay.
I, this time, I make a motion that we approve this emergency absentee voting policy. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the emergency absentee voting policy dated first day of March two thousand twenty-two. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the second document is where I have appointed emergency ballot commissioners. And Tammy Johnson will represent the Republican Emergency Ballot Commissioner, and Linda Lewis will represent the Democrat Emergency Ballot Commissioner. Those two, we want that take the ballots and the paperwork to the individual...
If the normal, if the appointed ballot commissioners can...
No.
Correct.
No.
They do what they do.
These emergency ones are only for those that are in, that have to use the emergency voting policy.
Okay.
That we have to...
That's what I want to make, okay, I just wanted to...
So the regular ballot commissioners are something different.
Right, okay, just want to make sure.
All right.
All right, I move that we approve this appointment of these two, two ballot commissioners. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the appointment of the two emergency ballot commissioners beginning March first, two thousand twenty-two, for a two-year period ending February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Tammy Johnson, representing the Republican Emergency Ballot Commissioner, and Linda Lewis will represent the Democrat Emergency Ballot Commissioner. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, I have the appointment of the ballot commissioners. So what I do is I contact both the Republican and Democrat parties for suggestions for a ballot commissioner for their party. And these ballot commissioners help review the ballot, help proof the ballot. They're here for testing when we test the equipment election night. They can be there to observe or help out. So the Democratic Executive Party requested to nominate Kim Dixon. The Republican County Executive Committee asked for Joe Williams to be, to represent them. And then the county clerk is always the chairman of ballot commissioners. So it's a two-year term.
And that also expires in twenty-three, since it's a two-year?
Well, it's the end of twenty-three.
Okay.
So...
That way, you're, for each election, you're reappointed.
Just wanted to make sure. All right, okay.
So I can't even update that.
At this time, I move that we approve the appointment of the ballot commissioners for the twenty-twenty-two.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the appointment of the ballot commissioners two thousand twenty-two. Kim Dixon, representing Democratic Party, Joe Williams, representing the Republican Party, with the clerk being the chairman of the ballot commissioners. Two-year term that will expire the end of two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, I have the appointment of the ballot commissioners. So what I do is I contact both the Republican and Democrat parties for suggestions for a ballot commissioner for their party. And these ballot commissioners help review the ballot, help proof the ballot. They're here for testing when we test the equipment election night. They can be there to observe or help out. So the Democratic Executive Party requested to nominate Kim Dixon. The Republican County Executive Committee asked for Joe Williams to be, to represent them. And then the county clerk is always the chairman of ballot commissioners. So it's a two-year term.
And that also expires in twenty-three, since it's a two-year?
Well, it's the end of twenty-three.
Okay.
So...
That way, you're, for each election, you're reappointed.
Just wanted to make sure. All right, okay.
So I can't even update that.
At this time, I move that we approve the appointment of the ballot commissioners for the twenty-twenty-two.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the designation of the early voting location for the upcoming election. And that is, just for clarity, the election center is located at one fifty-seven Plaza Court in the Kingwood Shopping Center in the Corner Mall, and has wonderful signage that will direct everybody where they need to be.
And plenty of free parking.
Yes, and there are no additional community voting locations in the county when it comes to early voting. So just to be clear on that, Commissioner Smith, did you make that mission? Commissioner Price?
Yes, you referred.
All right, yes, thank you. We'll find this. There's two spots for signature, the first and the last. All right, moving on, with an approval of our Board of Equalization Review and Minutes.
I move that this time we approve the minutes for the Board of Equalization Review and the minutes for February fifteenth.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the two thousand twenty-two Board of Equalization and Reviews, and the minutes for February fifteen, two thousand twenty-two. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. Proceedings in vacation.
At this time, I move that we accept proceedings in vacation and dispense with the reading of them for February sixteen through the twenty...
It's been properly moved and seconded to dispense with the readings of the proceedings in vacation and enter them into record for February sixteen, two thousand twenty-two, and February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. Estate settlements.
Estate settlements from the clerk. Move we approve those presented that are Clark, Friend, Peters, and Wright.
Now, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the estate settlement list, February fifteenth through February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Any business with our old business, care funding?
Any business with our old business?
Yes.
You do have a couple in there. I believe I received Brewston...
Yes, for the...
We were allotted, correct.
Yes, I did see that. Brings us to our new business. Approval for the two thousand, April two thousand twenty care housing month resolution and plan, which we have a copy of this here. So entertain a motion to authorize me to sign it.
I move this time we authorize the president to sign this approval for the proclaiming April twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, excuse me, twenty twenty-two, as the fair housing month resolution.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the president to sign the fair housing resolution. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
It says twenty-two.
It does.
Yeah.
It's just the title.
It's the title. That's why I was reading that.
Yes.
All right, moving on to our administrator's report.
Six, good. Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, the first item I think is maintenance. It is. Just to keep you up to date on the projects that we're doing and actively engaged in right now. The TV in the courtroom, we hope to have that. We had a meeting last week. That work is going to be done on the weekend just to be able to accommodate the courts, make sure that we're in and out. The TV watch will be mounted on the week of fourteenth. The Supreme Court will be there to mount the TV. The engineer will come back to make sure that the work we're doing is appropriate according to the drawings and the materials list that he gave us. We are going to be doing that with our maintenance department. You had allowed me to hire a part-time person a while back on a roof project that we ended up not being able to do, so I still have a little bit of money there. So we need a couple hands on that. So Mark will be heading up that project, and it will, our work should be done by Monday the seventh, with the engineer to follow on that day, or the eighth, to make sure that the work is, is the way the drawings and the material list suggest. The McGrew House, H. Newman did come and did an assessment. That, that house is over six thousand square feet, so that's a very large structure. I'm waiting for a recommendation to, from H. Newman on the size of furnaces, the amount of furnaces, the ductwork, and then I'll present that as well. I know that the McGrew Society has reached out to the legislators asking for some assistance on that project, and I have been contacted by, by at least one of those, and I certainly will provide any information that they need. Also, I, they were asking for other projects that I might know about, and I suggested that they, and I forwarded on information from Arthurdale since their presentation, and they are asking for some funding on that phase one. And also, I forwarded them, if you remember, you have a mini grant application from the Preston County Historical Society, because they have structural issues at their location. So I went ahead and forwarded that information. It was actually delicate, Buck Jennings, and he is going to forward that on. So hopefully, we'll get some assistance on some projects coming from the legislature. We, I did, if you remember, we have some dirt over at nine one one that was brought over from the hospital site, and I did get a confirmation email that, I believe the amount was fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars that was negotiated before COVID, and they're still committing to, to that. The way that will work is when that site work is done, then they will pay that portion. Of course, we'll keep them in the loop on how that's progressing. So that's a springtime project, and you, you can't really do anything with that site until that dirt work is complete over there. I think that's what I have for you today.
You have budget revisions?
I'm sorry, budget revisions. No budget revisions, on, on that particular, on the maintenance. We have no budget revisions. Now, the other things I need to add are just some correspondence and to let me know what's going on this week, as well as the next, until the month of March, you're going to be extremely busy, so you need to look down to make sure that, that you have any questions or anything. Of course, today, we have the bid opening. Tomorrow, Reesville had asked us about a, they want to do some ballot adjustments, and one of the ways you do that is through the county commission. We haven't had one for, for a very long time, so I'm working with the prosecuting attorney to come up with an application that will fit that particular request for now and for the future. So we have a meeting tomorrow at, on Wednesday to go over what I've come up with and, and get his ideas on how we can make that happen, because they're very anxious to get, to get busy on that. On Thursday, I have a meeting with the animal shelters. It's just a staff meeting that we try to have every other month. We'll be doing that. Also, on Thursday, I'll be facilitating a meeting, which you all had asked me to do some time ago with some parties about the Marcus Water Project. The invitations have been sent to the Public Service Commission, to the Chestnut Bridge Public Service District, to Newburgh, to Region Six. So that meeting I will facilitate, and hopefully, we'll get some information for those folks at Marcus, and of course, they're, they will be there. Next week, just a reminder to the office holders, and you got the reminder as well, that the budget sheets will do interim today. Also, you've got a schedule, and to the best of my knowledge right now, that is in the schedule. We take a break at eleven o'clock. We'll come back at noon. Sometimes, the judge in the magistrate's court, because our budgets are very small and limited, they may not need an audience with you. And so I'll keep you updated on that as we go along. We hope to have your notebooks out to you and in hand by March the ninth. Sal is going to come in and help me get those put together. She's working Thursday, Friday, and then Monday and Tuesday. If I have them ready for you on, at your meeting date, then I'll get them out to you. The advertisement for both your new positions is, is starting today. I have some, had some inquiries, and I'm taking those, and we'll make sure that those applications are forwarded out to those folks. Any, anybody you all want me to send any information to, you just let me know on that one. The minor vote reaches the advertisement, March third, on your letter of support to, to Healthrite. I'll make sure that you get a copy for that, and I'll bring it, if I ha, if I get it in time, I'll bring it next week for your signature, because I will email it to you before I prepare anything fun for, for your meeting on that. Let's see if I have anything else. Oh, work sessions. This is going to be tough. In, in between, I think the next appropriate time for us to have a work session would be on March twenty-second, unless you want me to schedule something within the week. We've got all the budget documents to come up with. That week of the fourteenth is kind of dedicated to budget, but that doesn't mean we can't work something in. But on your Tuesdays, you might do something on the eighth. I would not suggest anything on the fifteenth.
No, they can save that in.
On the twenty-second. And you remember that your resumes are due on March eighteenth, so you're going to have to work that in as well. So what, the, the topics of discussion that are out there that we've been working on is the EMS, the mass gathering ordinance. Now, right now, there is not super or urgency on that one as your one event, which is out there, is going to be using your old ordinance.
On the mass gathering?
Yes.
And the reason I bring this up is because they're getting ready to do that.
That amusement.
Can we wait until after we see what happens with that before we do?
I'm with you.
Because it would make more sense that way, you know what I mean?
Well, we, yeah, you know.
I mean, that's just my thought on it, because I know they're getting ready, but this is not. So it would make sense if we have some idea.
You may need a combination, you know, I'm not sure that...
I think the protection fee and the...
Because, you know, I read part of it, but that's something that we may be able to incorporate into. If we rewrite the ordinance, it would be something we can incorporate into that ordinance, or we could all at once, maybe one pack. That way, the person, it's a one-stop-shop thing. When they apply for permit, they know what they're going to have to do as far as...
I think that's...
If, if, that gets, if.
And the important thing is the one particular vendor that's been calling us, we all have agreed, we'll go with the current one.
Exactly.
So it's not a whole lot of...
Yeah.
This week, we will get our revenues from the assessor, so we'll figure out, we'll have more information with that. So that's always, I mean, we can't really hone in on anything until that's done.
Right.
You'll be getting, of course, some, your information in your notebook will, will come from our office as well on, on your revenues and expenditures. I will tell you that this year...
If you have that by Tuesday, not saying that you will, but if it is available by Tuesday, maybe we can spend a little bit of time, at least use, going through what you've done in the booklet.
Well, I, I think we can take care of all that on the fourteenth. It's, you know, we have, we have a lot of things. I mean, we, we have the ARPA money that...
If you have that by Tuesday, not saying that you will, but if it is available by Tuesday, maybe we can spend a little bit of time, at least use, uh, going through what you've done in the booklet.
Well, I, I think we can take care of all that on the fourteenth. It's, you know, we have, we have a lot of things. Um, I mean, we, we have the ARPA money that, uh, must have a contract. Uh, there's no guidance from the federal or the state, so we're having to come up, and, and I certainly have been working my resources with other administrators and others in the state to come up with contracts. Jay and I are gonna need to meet on that. So I think that on the fourteenth, I'll, I'll do you a better job, Dave, to have everything, uh, prepared for you. You certainly will get your information. It would be extremely helpful that between the ninth and the fourteenth, if you have any questions that I don't address, uh, please.
I'm sure there'll be some.
I'm sure, and, and probably that day because you wouldn't have an off, you know, you're just getting from the office holders, not being able to speak to them about it. Um, I mentioned that the ARPA, our first, uh, our next report is due April thirtieth, and they have already changed the compliance and requirements again. So I, I will be attending a webinar about the compliance and requirements for reporting on that. One of the huge changes that came from the final rule was that counties, um, there used to be this, how was it?
Magic formula.
Doctorial dissertation on a formula to do lost revenue. Uh, now they're doing it sort of like a standard deduction on Holland. And, uh, that is up to ten million dollars for, uh, operations for your county. Uh, it's, it's not tied to infrastructure. It's actually for you all to use for, um, general operating. So that's something that we will need to discuss because in our first reporting, it wasn't required for us to, we said we were uncertain. Uh, now, if we're wanting to look at that, uh, we need to do that. So that's something we are gonna have to discuss before the April thirtieth reporting period. I'm gonna try my best in the next, uh, when you get the budget. I am keeping track of some requests for funding. You've, you've had Arthurdale, you've had, um, and I'm, I'm putting those on a package because they weren't really specific that it was ARPA. Those that are ARPA will be specific, specified that way. But, uh, Arthurdale didn't do that. The, the McGrews on that building down there, the history, uh, the historical society really weren't specific. So all of those, I'm going to, um, let you know, uh, what's out there and requests that have come. Run Ford was one. Soil conservation I was throwing because that's a flood protection maintenance. Um, so those are a couple of things. Now, I will tell you, this year, the state of West Virginia has not been forthcoming on, uh, the statewide computer network. I, I attended some of the budget meeting yesterday. They say that is coming, but I can tell you on the sheets that I get, give you, uh, I, I can't guarantee that's exact because I, I just have to put in.
That's what happened last year, they really getting it to us.
Well, um.
Have to do a revision later.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, before the process is over, I'll have, you know, I've got to the end of the month. I'm just saying, as you look at your budget documents, there's gonna be some guesstimation. Two pieces of good news. Uh, you have a reduction in your, uh, retirement. It, uh, went from, now, this is budgeting, uh, I, I mean, I, I shouldn't call it good news, but financially, your commitment to the retirement system is at nine percent rather than ten percent. P E I A, you see no increase. And the letter I bought said several years, so that's very encouraging. And the, uh, it's, to the best of my knowledge, there's a recent regional general. Now, a couple of things that the state is still, um, unsure about. You got an email about the Senate bill that is, uh, talking about raises for elected officials. So, uh, that is, uh, something that I pray they do very soon, and they're gonna do it for your consideration. That, in that particular bill, it is, uh, you know, if money allow you to do that, I mean, it.
Yeah, you can't just carve allowance to do it. You still gotta have money in your budget. It's very specific about that.
Now, it is my understanding from this commission that you want five percent put in your contingencies. So we're gonna start with a budget that, uh, has five percent, um, and all the requests will be in, and, uh, we'll, we'll go from there. Any questions on that?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Just a comment. Now, we had talked about that cybersecurity stuff, the, what was it, twenty-nine, some thousand? Something like that. Now.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, twenty-seven. I could have said something else, and twenty-five, but thank you. Now, with the ARPA funding, I know you said it would be one year. That funding, as long as it's committed, if we could do that, if we commit it, you know what I mean? And that allows.
You don't not have to spend the money until twenty-six. So, I mean, if you wanna take that out of, again, I think that would, I think that's operating expenses, and that's something I need some guidance on. It's certainly a lot.
Because I know it's computer security.
But I think that comes from lost revenue.
Okay.
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I've got, because you're using it from around.
Because that'd be nice to at least take that, you know, use that little bit. It's not a huge amount, you know, in the grand scheme of things, but it's a little bit. You know what I mean? And like I said, twenty-seven thousand dollars does make a little bit of a difference, you know, on our budget. That's something we use, especially when we have all these maintenance issues and everything, so.
Well, I, I think that it's a decision of the county commission of how you, where you wanna put the ARPA funds. So I certainly would say that that's available. I just, now they're changing the categories, so I, I just would feel more comfortable to answer that.
Yeah.
Correctly, once I get and pray they don't change anything else on us, at least till we get through this first reporting.
Well, they, they're gonna make, make volume of that whole cybersecurity thing, you know, because it is cybersecurity. So, and that's a big push. I mean, they had that big thing last week, you know, after the war started.
One of the requests that I made, just for clarity, um, I, I did ask for two proposals, one with the Red Canary, one without the Red Canary, so you can see the differences in the contracts we'll have. But the other thing I requested was, um, I'm gonna reach out to the risk pool. It could be that insurance companies, and these are larger firms perhaps, and, um, I don't wanna say better known, but more established, maybe, with names we recognize, um, are actually, and some of their, uh, insurances are saying that they will cover you if you have these things going on. And so I wanna make sure with the risk pool that the, the language that says that, because I'm not saying you don't have an option, but I'm not sure their language. And I think that's really important because that's where our insurer, that's where we have our million-dollar security guide hit, and we wanna make sure that we're doing everything to get that, that opportunity is available to you. So I have asked for that information.
Yeah, yeah. We were in a meeting last week in Parkersburg.
Okay.
The, the risk pool, the board, and, uh, there was some discussion of that, but I also met with, for a few minutes, with our IT guy on, yeah, Ramon. Um, and, and there is one thing that they're trying to accomplish so that we can get the full coverage on it. And it's not a big cost to do that, or it was just time. So, so we might be in line to, to improve our coverage.
Yeah.
We have good coverage now, more coverage is something.
That's why I'm looking for some guidance there, uh, Dawn. And also, we have to always remember that this technology thing is, um, we are growing, uh, the amount of devices we're, we're using. Uh, one of the things that we're hoping to accomplish this year is with the cooperation of office holders, is really getting your technology into a budget that you see how many computers are going out, how many need to be renewed, your access points, your switches, all those kind of things so that we don't have budgets in the sheriff, budgets here, budgets there, but, but one budget. The other thing I'm doing this year is all the utilities. You just have utilities scattered around. All the utilities are gonna be coming and all being paid for one account. I think it helps in the county clerk's office with coding, you know, your office with coding. Uh, you know, we have a good opportunity, uh, to, with, with the changes you're making administratively. I, I think it's important that, uh, the, the most efficient and effective and simplest way to, to make this happen is, is good at this time as well. Any other questions for me? I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we will move into our commissioners' comments. Commissioner Price?
Um, watching legislative things, Kathy took my.
Oh, sorry. Did I steal your thunder?
Yeah, so I don't have anything, other than, no. Hey, yeah, Risk Pool's Board of Directors met. Uh, I'm on that Board of Directors, uh, and, uh, it, it's an amazing operation. And we did talk about the homeland security, and especially with what's going on in East, uh, Europe. So, uh, anyway, everything's good, and there may even be a little kickback this year on our rates again. So, uh, that's, that's all good. Everything, if that's been the best thing we've ever done. And I would encourage any of the municipalities in the county that are not already part of the Risk Pool, if you contact me, I'll come and talk to you about it, and I'll send people to know what they're doing. But, but it's, uh, we've got several agencies that are, and, uh, I would encourage every town, every PSD to, uh, to look into that, as well as fire departments. The fire departments can actually save some money. Considerable amount of money if they, uh, are insured through this risk pool and, uh, the nonprofit agency, so. That's a big deal, to save some money, that's.
Commissioner Smith?
Have a solid West Authority meeting this coming Wednesday, so working on that. And, uh, hopefully get some more information from the legislator. This, this week will be very busy. They had their crossover days and everything, so they should be really pushing some different things. Just before I forget, we're talking about the twenty-second. I had the CME meeting, and it's eight o'clock.
Okay, so we need to change that meeting to what time?
It's skewed until nine. It goes from eight to nine. And I mean, they're very.
Okay, so ten o'clock or, or is nine-thirty good? Nine-thirty still good?
Nine-thirty should be okay.
Okay, well, that's our meeting.
The last time I did it via Zoom, I'll do it on chat.
Could just let me know.
Nine-thirty should still be fine, because.
That's why we adjusted to nine-thirty, was to.
Yeah, it does.
Let me know, that doesn't work, because that's really important.
But right now, I don't have a, a meeting. But like last month, I was able to do it via Zoom, so I'm assuming it'll be able to do that again, which is actually great. It's it right now.
Legislative, uh, legislative, uh, call on Friday morning.
Oh, that's right. Is it Friday, did, did they move to Friday? I know they had it this past.
It's scheduled, it's scheduled for Thursday, but with what's going on, I'm gonna say Friday, but.
Yeah, okay.
For right now, it's Thursday.
It's two o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I know.
I tried to keep track.
Just a couple of things. Uh, first of all, um, saw some robins this morning, so that's always a good sign, right? But, uh, today.
No lowlanders, forget robins.
No lowlanders, that's right. Uh, April is just around the corner, and in that month, um, of course, April is like your spring clean, clean up towns, clean up, you know, the, the county. Um, and I know a lot of times the chamber or other organizations promote that. I've not seen anything yet, and so let's be thinking and hearing in that direction. You know, we approved our cleanup ordinance. Uh, we'd like to see that then maybe get together as their group or whatever we need to do and just discuss things. I know it's no longer a committee that's working on an ordinance, um, but, you know, get the wheels.
Let's get, let's get Jay.
Yes.
Let's, let me reach out to Jay and get some ideas of how he wants to approach that. I know friends of the team have been active in the past.
They have, yes.
And cleanup kind of things, so.
Usually this time of year, also, this is when they do the Make It Shine thing for State of West Virginia.
Jay would be our best.
And also.
So if we could just look at something, I don't know, I'm not even opposed to us coordinating some countywide effort to.
I just like to get a quick throw up about it.
Partner out.
I think we can list the, all the, uh, the people. I, I think we can list all the trash contractors by municipality and.
I would like to do something. I would like to do something. So let's get that on our radar because April's coming. Yes, sir.
Hunter, that guy that's running for county commission, he told me the police got the first Saturday of April, they're going to boost the community.
Yeah, they always do something up there.
Some of the communities around here do.
We're, we're talking about the whole month because each community has a time that they do something. We'd like to just see April be this going on somewhere.
I would just like to the county commission initiate something countywide that, so let's get with Jay and discuss.
I think Jay's the person.
Yes, yes. And so that would be great. And then, um, April is also, um.
Your birthday.
No, it is not my birthday, but it is a month where the County Commissioners Association does an essay contest. So all eighth graders across the state of West Virginia are invited to participate in a essay contest, um, that takes place about, um, your role of your county commissioners and learning about county government. And, and so, um, this is an annual contest. Last couple of years, last year, we didn't have as much participate as we did the year prior, and we have had, uh, some winners and honorable mention come out of Preston County. And so with the permission of my fellow commissioners, I would like to attend and get on the agenda for the next Board of Education meeting.
You want it in April or March?
I would like to do it now because the contest deadline to have your.
You want it in March?
Yes. Is April twenty-second. So I wanna get out to the schools and promote this with the permission of the Board of Education and, uh, see if we can bring home some more wins for Preston County. Meanwhile, educating our youth a little bit about our job and what we, how we serve people. So that, um, contest is.
Can I caveat into that just slightly? Because I wanted to show you something, and I, I forgot it until you said that, and it triggered my memory. NACO has this art contest.
Okay.
And what they do is it's a calendar. I don't know if you guys got the calendar or not. I got it probably sent to me. I don't know if it's because I was on one of the committees or what, but. And it, it's going to be, the competition closes on May first, twenty-twenty-two, at midnight. Or one minute before midnight.
April first?
Yeah, May first, May first, May first. And I've got, I can, and if you go to that website down at the bottom, then NACO slash art, it has the actual eligibility and everything. And really what they do, I should have brought the calendar, I apologize.
That's all right.
It, the, it's for kids all across, and some of these are really neat, and it's different age groups, and each month has a child that they picked from around the country, you know, with this winning thing for the calendar. And it's really cool. So, so, and it's, and it's based, the theme is, I love my country because.
Well, and it is also, um, the month of April, the National County Government Month is month of April. So NACO is our national platform. Um, so, yes, so I would, you know, assume that it would be fine to promote both.
I, that's why I thought that you would do both.
Because then we're reaching the kids that are, you know, writing and the artists also engage that, that. Uh, that would be a different spin on what I've read through the last couple of years, for sure, is an artistic view of what.
But I just thought when you said that, I didn't, I was familiar with this until the other day when I got the calendar, and I was like, oh, this is perfect. And, uh, so, yeah.
All right, perfect. You guys Google that, are you getting on that next?
I'm gonna get us.
Thank you, Kathy. And then the last thing, um, that might be it. Um, one other thing I would like to do, um, I know with the month of March, we're super busy with, you know, the budget, but moving after the budget into the month of April, I would like to go ahead and maybe start, I think, facilitated the meetings with the municipalities and the towns concerning the ARPA fund, maybe get the auditor scheduled to come again to maybe the civic center like we did before, work with the city on that. Um, and see if we could facilitate that again to.
Yeah, they're not gonna be available until after the budget's done.
Sure, sure. And just get that on the radar so that we can make sure that everybody is, you know, still, you know, confused as ever and everything's as clear as night on how we can spend our money. So I think that that would be a good enough meeting to get facilitated. And I'm just a huge advocate, I want, you know, we try to work with municipalities as much as possible, but I think it's a great partnership when looking at spending funds and different things that we cannot meet with them and just be engaged. So, thank you. Um, other than that, that's all I have for today. Anyone else have anything? No? All right, with that, this meeting is officially adjourned.
Take care of coffee, dear, be very healthy, ma.
My dad, you need to sign this.
Okay.